To our Thursday morning Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to kick us off and start with a land acknowledgement. We have Native American History Month starting next in just a couple of days. So on behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, I'd like to humbly recognize that we are gathered on Indigenous land, the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Coast Salish people. We thank the caretakers of this land who've lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. And we acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase Native communities. And we respect Indigenous rights to sovereignty and self-determination. We commit to being better listeners, learners, and to lifting up Indigenous voices. We also commit to identifying racist practices, to practice allyship, and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. So with that, we'll kick off our meeting today. Just a couple of announcements to members of the public and visitors. Welcome. We are happy to make all commission meetings open to the public. And please note, the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders that in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials directly. This meeting is a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely, while others are participating in person in the boards and commission room at Seattle City Hall. Pulling up our Color Brief Space norms. Thanks, Olivia. Our Color Brief Space norms that I know we've done workshops on previously with the folks who created this. So for our newer commissioners, we will likely be able to revisit these, hopefully with the folks that created it and dig deeper. But for today, the norms have a particular relevance today for today's agenda. So I'm wondering if folks, if I can have a volunteer, someone who can maybe pick one for us to hold as we go through our agenda today. Any volunteers?
I'll be happy to go.
Thanks, Matt.
I am looking especially at look for learning and commit to learning in public. Avoid playing the devil's advocate that upholds white-dominated power structure. Because I think today we're going to cover a lot of territory. And I think we just need to think about this sort of without. Yeah, broaden our lens and open our minds and see how this really works in the real public sphere.
Thank you, Matt. If there are no amendments or modifications, I suggest that we all agree to these norms. Okay. On the agenda today, we have one main agenda item. So we have a presentation by city staff on the proposed changes to the neighborhood residential development standards and proposed changes to zoning in order to implement the new comprehensive plan update. Before I move on to that, I'm hoping we can approve the minutes from our October 10th meeting. Can I ask for a motion to approve?
Nick moves to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Nick. Is there a second?
Andy seconds.
Oh, multiple seconds. I think I heard Andy first. Any changes or amendments to the meeting minutes from October 10th? Okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Just a reminder of our upcoming commission meetings. Our next Housing and Neighborhoods Committee is scheduled for November 7th from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. That meeting will be held in a hybrid format as well on the MS Teams platform. And our next full commission meeting is scheduled for November 14th from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. That meeting will also be held in hybrid formats with options for meeting in person in the boards and commissions room or online using MS Teams. And also just a reminder, you should have all received a calendar from Vanessa of charting out all of our meetings to the end of the year to ensure that we can approve a letter in time. And there's a very important meeting in December, towards mid to late December, that she asked that we need quorum at in order to make that timeline work. So if you have not seen that email, please keep an eye out. Look for it and let her know if you are able to make, especially the meeting. I think it's only a half hour. We just need to approve it. So please, please let her know and take a look at that. And try to make as many of those as you can between now and then. Any announcements or commission bins? I'll pass to John or Olivia for that.
Thanks, Jamie. Good morning, everybody. This is John Hoy, Staff to the Planning Commission, joining remotely this morning. Just as Jamie noted before, this is a hybrid meeting being held both in person and via the MS Teams platform. I'll review a few important things about the meeting. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for commissioners to ask questions and provide comment. Please put your name in the chat to be recognized by the chair to speak. But please remember to not put substantive comments in the chat. The chat is only to be recognized for the queue for questions and comments. We will have two opportunities for public comment this morning. Olivia will read public comment emailed to us prior to this meeting. If the speakers are not in person, we also invite any members of the public present at this meeting to offer public comment. We will be taking public comment. Both we always provide opportunities to take public comment, both at the beginning and at the end of our full commission meetings. Before we move on, I'd just like to remind commissioners to plan on attending at least one of the Conference of Plan Open House meetings being held over the next several weeks. That schedule has been sent to you and will be sent weekly in the weekly highlights that are sent on Monday. That schedule is also available online at the One Seattle Plan zoning implementation website, which we can also send in the weekly. So Jamie, I'll turn it back to you for introductions and then we'll do public comment.
Thanks, John. I dropped the link to the open houses as well. If folks want to find their open house that they can attend. All right. I believe, Olivia, we have one person in public who is going to give public comment. Is that right, Olivia?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll do a little preface, which is the commission provides time for public comment at all meetings. A reminder that we do not hold public hearings and are an advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. Individuals who make comments to the commission should remember that the mayor and city council make the decisions. And we encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to directly to elected officials. I invite individuals in the audience to offer public comment. And please keep your comments to two minutes.
Okay, so Donna, go ahead, Donna, when you're ready.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name's Donna Breski. I'm a civil engineer. I own a company that provides civil engineering and land use planning. I had a client about three years ago, the project crashed and burned. And because they couldn't get access to water, there were significant capital improvement upgrades that Seattle Public Utilities placed on this particular project. So this upzoning that's being done is of little or no value if you can't get access to utilities. It's kind of a setup. There's been 5,000 unbuilt dwelling units since 2017 per my review of water availability certificates that I obtained via public records. I'm here to talk about the Growth Management Act, specifically RCW 36.708.070.3(c). And it requires that the proposed location and capacities of expanded new facilities, which include water systems, are to be identified as part of the comprehensive plan, capital improvement plan. However, no such information exists within the 2019 Water System Plan as confirmed by John Ford, Engineering Supervisor, Seattle Public Utilities Development Services Office. This was via a deposition taken from John Ford on September 24th. There's currently a lawsuit by a company named Oom Living, who in order to get one water meter that's on 39th and Elm Grove, West Seattle, for a three-lot short flat, they need one new water meter. They're required to do $350,000 worth of water main extension. John Ford testified, and this is straight from the transcript. "We do not have a Seattle Public Utilities map in our comprehensive system plan in which water mains are going to be extended, replaced, updated, et cetera. We do not have that as part of our plan." So this means the concurrency requirement is not being met. There's upzoning being done and the water system is not being upgraded concurrently. Is that my two minutes? Thank you. Can I speak again at the next public hearing open for another two minutes? Is there anything that precludes me from that?
Good question. I'm not sure.
Then I can.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. We'll move on to our guest speakers. Our Michael Hubner and Brennan Staley are joining us from the Office of Planning and Community Development to brief us on the new materials released last week related to the comprehensive plan, proposed neighborhood residential development standards, and proposed zoning maps to implement the One Seattle Plan. We have an hour and 10 minutes or so for this agenda item. So please hold your questions until the end so Michael and Brennan can get through the entirety of their presentation. And then Michael and Brennan, if you could leave about 35 minutes so that we can have time for Q and A. So take it away.
Good morning.
Sorry, I mean to cut you off, Michael. Can we do a quick round of introductions? We haven't done that yet.
Oh, thank you, Olivia. Totally missed that part. How did we miss that? Clearly, clearly, my coffee has not kicked in yet. So if, well, that's a first. I've been on the commission for so long and have not done that before. Okay, all right. Good morning, y'all. Let's do introductions so that Brennan and Michael know who we are. So if you can do your name, pronouns, neighborhood, type of work you do, the usual. I'm Jamie, she/her pronouns. I live in the future 130th Station area. And I also, and I work in climate change and environmental justice and policy. I will pass to my fellow co-chair, Michaela.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Michaela Dafford, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And I will pass it to Andy.
Hi, Andy Denenberg, he/him, Northeast Seattle. And I teach at University of Washington in public health and urban planning. And I will pass it to Dylan Stevenson since he overlaps some of what I do.
Thank you, Andy. Hello, everybody. My name is Dylan Stevenson, he/they pronouns. I also teach in the Urban Design and Planning Program at UW, doing Indigenous planning. I will pass it on to Matt Hutchins.
My name is Matt Hutchins. I use he/him pronouns. I am an architect and I live in West Seattle. I will pass it over to Matthew.
Hey, everyone. I'm Matt Malloy, he/him pronouns. I work at the Queen Anne Beer Hall and live in Green Lake. And I'll pass it to Monica.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I live in the Central District and I work in advocacy and organizing for equity and access in youth sports and physical activity. And I will pass to Michaela.
Michaela's gone already, so maybe Nick.
Sorry about that. Nick.
No worries.
No worries. Good morning, everyone. Nick Whipple, I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Del Ridge neighborhood. And for my day job, I'm a city planner on the East Side. Let's go Cecilia.
Good morning. My name's Cecilia, she/her pronouns. I live in Roosevelt neighborhood. And for my day job, I'm a community organizer at Dispo Rights Washington and work with people displaced and non-drivers around transportation and housing issues. And I will pass it to Dylan.
Hey, everybody. My name is Dylan Wasecki. I use he/him pronouns. I am an architect, urban planner, apartment seaman here in Seattle. And I live in the Central District. And can somebody give me a hand in who hasn't gone yet to pass into the next person?
I'm Deanna. Good morning, everyone. Deanna Quintanar, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I'm a multimodal transportation planner. And that's our staff.
Let's go to Caleb.
Caleb, okay.
Good morning. My name is Caleb Twolday, he/him pronouns. I live in Beacon Hill and I work in education. I will pass it to Rose.
Morning. I'm Rose Luchella-Witson, pronouns they/them. I am a professional wetland scientist and environmental permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering for my day job. And I live up north in former Lipton Springs, now North Gate planning area. Did Radica go?
Let's go to Zio or Radica. Is Radica here?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm Radica. I'm Radica Naira. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Wedgwood and I'm a city planner. And I'll pass to you.
Hi, all. I'm Zio Alvarez. I live in White Center Highland Park. And I'm an architectural and urban designer at Element Architects. And I use she/they pronouns. Staff?
Sure, I'll jump in. Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm staff to the commission. Robin?
Robin McGonigal, staff to the commission. I use she/they pronouns and I live on Bashan Island. John?
Again, I'm John Hoy, Staff to the Planning Commission. I use he/him pronouns. And I believe that's it.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, Brennan and Michael, take it away.
Good morning. Let me just introduce myself quickly. Michael Hubner, I use he/him pronouns. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager in the Office of Planning and Community Development. And I am the Project Manager for the Comprehensive Plan Update. And I'm joined by Brennan Staley. Brennan, you want to introduce yourself quickly?
Sure, yeah. Strategic Advisor also in the Office of Planning and Community Development. I use he/him pronouns. I live in the West Seattle neighborhood. And my role here is I'm the project lead for the zoning update portion.
Great. And I also live in Wedgwood, just to place myself geographically. Radica, I'll see you out there when I'm walking my dog or something. Okay. Let's see here. Let me get the slides going. So we'll try to be fairly efficient here with the presentation. I want to leave a lot of time for Q and A. So apologies if I go by some of the slides a little bit more quickly, especially a material that I think we presented to the commission before. But the main item that we want to share with you is information about the zoning changes that accompany the comprehensive plan update and then also the growth strategy itself, around which we now have a mayor's final recommended proposal that is the foundation for the zoning changes. So recognizing there may be some members of the public who are listening in. Briefly, the comp plan is a 20-year plan for growth. It guides coordinated action, not only in the land use arena, but also by other city departments. We update this once every 10 years. The new plan is called the One Seattle Plan. And it includes at its core a growth strategy, which is, think of it as a high-level policy map that shows where we are planning for housing and employment growth to meet the needs of the city over the next 20 years and beyond. And it is implemented through zoning legislation. We're going to talk about both of those in this presentation this morning. What are we trying to achieve with the One Seattle Plan growth strategy? Well, first and foremost, providing for more housing in the city to meet our pressing needs. We're in the midst of a housing, a protracted housing crisis in terms of affordability, availability, and how is a housing that is suitable to meet the needs of Seattle's residents now and people seeking to live in Seattle. This plan, and particularly the zoning we're talking about today, will boost the housing capacity, the potential number of units that could be built to meet that 20-year-plus need to 330,000 homes. That is roughly doubling our existing capacity that we have under current zoning. It results in greater housing diversity across more neighborhoods, provides both incentives for affordable housing and also opportunities in terms of sites that can be developed by nonprofit and other providers of affordable housing projects. It contributes to wealth-building opportunities with more affordable homeownership opportunities. We are planning for our housing growth in neighborhoods and locations that are walkable, mixed-use, and have access to transit. And finally, addressing equity by reducing exclusionary zoning citywide and also reducing displacement pressures by providing more housing to relieve that market pressure that has led a lot of people to not be able to afford to live in the city or be forced to move from their neighborhood or from the city altogether. So that's a quick flyover of our goals and objectives. Also, a quick flyover of a timeline. We're in the third year of this process to update the plan. Crucially, in 2024, we released a draft plan and draft EIS in the spring. I know we came to the commission and talked to you about what was in the draft plan. And I thank the commission for being actively engaged in that process, providing a comment letter, attending our open houses. I really appreciate the presence of the commission and your great ideas that were provided during that comment period. So we took in that public comment and we are poised to release a final plan by the end of this year. This past week, we released the growth strategy, which I'll talk about in a second. But the remainder of the plan, the full document, will be released in a couple of months from now, along with the final environmental impact statement. And then that will move on to the city council for their consideration and adoption in 2025. We have a timeline for the zoning update or the zoning legislation itself. This timeline overlaps with the comp plan legislation and follows closely thereafter in terms of its adoption. So what that looks like is we've broken out the zoning implementation into several phases. Phase one will be the legislation adopting new neighborhood residential zoning code to implement the new state law requiring middle housing, HB 1110. There is, as we'll talk about, there's a draft of that legislation that was just released last week for public comment. And we plan to transmit that legislation to council in the first quarter of next year so that the council can consider that and adopt it by the state deadline of June 2025. The second phase of legislation are the zoning changes that implement other features of the growth strategy, which we'll talk about in a second here. That includes our neighborhood centers, new and expanded regional and urban centers, and upstones along selected arterials that have frequent transit routes on them. That legislation, we're rolling that out with draft maps that became available last week, draft legislation texts, which will be made available in the coming weeks. And then legislation going to the city council by May of 2025. And we expect that adoption of those, that Phase Two of zoning legislation would happen, we hope, by the summer, fall of 2025. There is a Phase Three, which we'll briefly touch on. The mayor made an announcement in his budget speech about a new added initiative to study additional zoning changes within existing centers, something that was not entirely scoped within our original EIS. We would be doing a supplemental EIS for those changes. And that would be legislation would happen after Phase Two. We can touch on that in a little more detail in our further slide. So just to be clear, what is out for public comment and review right now? For the mayor's recommended growth strategy has been released. There is a map. There is both a very brief folio report and a longer description of the growth strategy being made available. That is information that provides context and background to the public for considering the items that we are asking for public comment on. And those are the updated neighborhood residential zoning. We both have a summary report describing the updated proposal as well as the actual text of the legislation itself. And then the second major piece here is the draft zoning maps for the centers and arterials that I talked about before. So we're not taking comment on the growth strategy at this time. We got a lot of comment during the spring that was considered in crafting and making changes to the draft growth strategy we released earlier this year. And but it is very important that we communicate that to the public and stakeholders and the commission. So we'll talk about that as well. I'm going to dive right into the growth strategy and especially highlight changes that were made since the draft in the spring. So the strategy, again, this is a high-level policy map. This is not the zoning map itself. Continues to be predicated on the very same place types we discussed in the spring, regional and urban centers, a new place type that we call neighborhood centers. Urban neighborhood is the name for the balance of the city shown in cream color on this map, which comprises what historically have been single-family neighborhoods and but also neighborhoods serving other uses that serve neighborhoods or along some of the arterials in those areas. But it's mostly the historical single-family zoning, which we now call neighborhood residential. But there are other place types on the map as well. Manufacturing industrial centers, other industrial areas that are outside of the MICs, our major institution areas, and parks and open space. Those are all identified in the growth strategy. We're really going to focus on the first four place types around which we are seeking to meet our housing needs. And that's where the zoning changes are proposed. Here's another way of looking at the place types. I'm not going to go through all the detail here because we have talked about this with the commission before. But suffice it to say that the regional and urban centers are very much, have some continuity with our existing plan, Seattle 2035, which identifies urban centers and urban villages. We renamed those places and in, as I'll show you on the map, also expanded several of them in the updated plan. But there's very much, it continues to be an important role for those major centers in the city, our densest neighborhoods like downtown, university district, smaller but still significant concentrations of housing and jobs, such as Roosevelt or Columbia City, West Seattle Junction, and others, where we have a mix of uses, housing that's primarily apartments or in the regional centers up to high-rise development. We have major transit access around light rail, bus rapid transit, and other types of transit. Those continue to have a role. We have our new place type called neighborhood centers. These are smaller places, but with many of the same characteristics, access to transit, a local commercial core and access to amenities. And they are scattered throughout neighborhoods around which we have not which we have not had as much housing diversity to date and provides additional housing around that core transit and services node in each of those neighborhoods. And we'll take a look at those. And then finally, the urban neighborhood, two things are going on in urban neighborhood with the growth strategy. One is adoption of new neighborhood residential zoning to comply with state law and allow a whole range of middle housing options. And then also ups, upzones along our frequent transit arterials that pass through urban neighborhoods largely are there connecting our centers and around which there were ample opportunities to provide new housing above and beyond the density you would typically find in neighborhood residential, more of a small to moderate scale apartments along those transit arterials. So here's the, here's the map, the revised map. It has seven regional centers and 25 urban centers. Those are the darkest, the very darkest blue, and then the navy blue shown on the map. Ballard has been reclassified as a regional center that's retained from the draft, as well as the creation of a new urban center at the northeast 130th Street Light Rail Station. You see that in the north part of the city here in a more hatch pattern. The hatch patterns indicate what is new or expanded in our centers geography. And there are expansions of several of the existing regional or urban centers. I think there are eight expansions altogether. Two, well, I'll talk about changes in a second, but you'll see those as well as hatch, hatched areas around the existing area that was already designated as a center. What's new on the map is previously, the map has shown, I'll call them fuzzy boundaries, more of a, excuse me, more of a conceptual map. You'll now see very definite boundaries around our neighborhood centers and the expansion areas. And that's reflected in the boundaries you'll see on the neighborhood. That's an increase from 24 neighborhood centers in the spring. That's in total, that's 29 new neighborhood centers, newly created neighborhood centers, and one existing urban village that is re-designated as a neighborhood center. And then finally, we've talked about the urban neighborhood. I don't think there's anything to add, but you see that as well on the cream color on the map. So just to really emphasize what has changed from the draft, and I know the commission would pay very close attention to the draft strategy released in the spring, there are five new neighborhood centers, North Magnolia, High Point, Mid Beacon Hill, Upper Fremont, and Hillman City. Along with that, there was another neighborhood center that was studied and considered in the Squire Park area. That's the Donut Hole, if you will, surrounded by existing regional and urban centers and the central district generally. And that area, we consider that as a neighborhood center, but I've actually decided to, and the mayor has agreed, the best, the most logical thing to do with the Donut Hole is add this area to some of the adjacent existing centers. So the First Hill Capitol Hill Regional Center is expanded to take to include part of the Squire Park area and the 23rd Union Jackson Urban Center to the east as well as expanded into that area. And then finally, South Park, which has historically been an urban village, is re-designated as a neighborhood center. We can talk more about that. There's interest in exploring that. And I think that's where I turn this over to Brennan. We're going to shift here to talking about the zoning that implements all of the place types that I just very briefly described. Happy in the Q and A to circle back to anything that I covered. Brennan?
Great. Yeah. So the first of the change that we want to talk about is the updated proposal to update the zoning in neighborhood residential zones. I, you know, obviously, people are aware neighborhood residential is our lowest density zone. Rock pie is about two thirds of the city right now and allows, you know, detached, one detached home on a lot plus accessory dwelling units. They, neighborhood residential zones provide great opportunities for larger households that have, you know, access to open space. At the same time, they're very expensive. The average detached home is now over a million dollars. And so there, these neighborhoods are increasingly inaccessible to low and moderate income households. At the same time, in 2025, the state passed HB 1110, which requires cities across Washington state to allow a wider range of housing types in these neighborhoods. Next slide. So both to achieve our citywide goals and also to meet, comply with state laws, we're proposing some pretty substantial changes to these zones. This table shows the, the proposed, those things that are in black and bolded and italicized represent changes. I think maybe the, one of the more substantial changes is that in our proposal we put out in March, we proposed essentially two different zones, one for areas of low displacement risk, one for areas of high displacement risk. We are proposing to move away from that to have one set of standards. That was really based on what you heard from the public that people in, in those neighborhoods, you should have the same opportunity to redevelop their lots as in other parts of the city. So the, in terms of the updated standards, obviously, we're one, increasing the number of units allowed on a lot. That's achieved through the maximum density, and we would have a density of one unit per 1,250 square feet of lot area. So that'd be four units on a typical 5,000 square foot lot. Except, of course, you know, consistent with the state law, at least four units would be allowed on all lots regardless of lot size, and six units would be allowed within a quarter mile walk of major transit, or if two units are affordable. It is worth noting also that, you know, consistent, also consistent with state law, when you measure the area of the lot for purposes of figuring out lot coverage or density, that doesn't include environmentally critical areas like creeks or steep slopes. And that's just intended to make sure that we don't get, you know, development within those areas, but that, you know, outside of those areas and the remainder of the lot, you can have development consistent with what's allowed in other areas. The size of the building is regulated by a floor area ratio. And again, floor area ratio, if you multiply the lot size by the floor area ratio, that determines the total amount of building square footage allowed on your lot. So again, if you have a lot size of 5,000 square feet and the FAR of one, that means you could have total floor area of 5,000 square feet across all the buildings. Consistent with what currently is in place today and what we proposed in March, those, that FAR would vary based on the number of units. So if you have more units, you'd be allowed to have slightly more floor area across those units. What has changed is the previous required proposal was to have a maximum FAR of 0.9, and that has been increased to 1.2. So our, our proposal now is, is pretty consistent with what the state's model code suggests, you know, increasing density from 0.6 FAR, if you only have one unit, up to 1.2 if you're maximizing density. Lot coverage would remain at 50%. The height limit is proposed to increase from what is today 30 feet plus a bonus for pitch roof of five feet to 32 feet plus a bonus for pitch roof. And the purpose of that is that, is to really to create more livable space, more little floor to ceiling heights. You know, obviously, it's, in many places, it's traditional to raise the first floor off of the ground. And what that means is the 30 feet height limit, you end up, your, the floor to ceiling heights on other, on the floors become a little cramped. And so just making, making sure that even if your building is a little raised off the ground, you can have a kind of more traditional floor to ceiling heights in those buildings. We're also proposing to have the same minimum open space or amenity area requirement of 20% of the lot area to provide space for, you know, outdoor space for people and for trees and vegetation. The minimum setbacks are also fairly similar, a front of 10, 10 foot setback of 10 feet, a rear setback of 10 feet if there is no alley or zero if there is an alley. What is changed is that we are proposing that accessory dwelling units would only have a rear setback of five feet. That's actually consistent with what we have in place today. So there's a desire to kind of retain that provision. And then the side setback will remain at five feet. Another thing that is new in this proposal is that we do have, we're proposing a bonus for stacked flats. Again, stacked flats represent, you know, anytime you have units that are above or below other units, so apartments, condos. If people propose stacked flats that are within a quarter mile of frequent transit and are on lots that are 6,000 square feet or greater, they can have additional floor area of 1.4, increased from 1.2, and a maximum density limit of one unit per 650 square feet. And that means in nine units on a 6,000 square foot lot. So probably, you know, three per floor. And again, this is based on public feedback. We heard a lot of interest in fostering more of these types of units as they allow people to live on one floor, which, you know, creates very efficient floor plates for those units, but also allows for the creation of more accessible units and units where people can age in place. Next slide. We also are proposing a bonus for affordable housing. The, this proposal is the same as what we talked about last time. It would apply only to buildings in which at least half the units are affordable. If it's for rental project, for people making 60% of area median income, for ownership, 80% of area median income, and obviously, in these buildings, they get an extra floor plus some additional lot coverage, density, and floor area. Next slide. We're also retaining the provision for corner stores, which would allow small scale commercial uses such as restaurants and retail stores on corner lots throughout the area, providing meet certain standards for size, hours, noise, and odor, et cetera. This proposal has remained unchanged since what we put out in March. Next slide. And also, Mike, I think your, you have your calendar appointment is blocking the screen for people. Or is that me?
I think that's you, Brennan.
That's me. What do you know? Thank you. So these are some, so we, similar to in March, we had commissioned Makers Architecture to produce some visualizations of what this would, could potentially look like. Those have been updated. You know, a complete set of these visualizations is contained in our report that's called Updating Seattle's Neighborhood Residential Zones. Here are just three examples. I think, you know, the major takeaway is that this new higher FAR is likely to result primarily in kind of three story, three bedroom units, like you see in the three unit and four unit examples. And, you know, again, those are tending to be more family sized units. That was really the reason for the increase in FAR is that people really wanted to see more of that kind of three bedroom style of unit. However, in, in some areas, you know, especially where the stacked flat bonus is allowed, we might see some, you know, small condo and apartment units. I think they're likely to, in the near term, they're going to be extremely unlikely we're going to see many of them. But the longer term, that might be more and more practical. You can see what that looks like on the example on the right.
And Brennan, if I could chime in on the stacked flats just for a moment, I'm not sure this is exactly what the rendering here shows, but with the, in the areas with the bonus at that 6,000 square foot lot with the new development standards, that could potentially allow a nine unit building on the 6,000 square foot lot.
That's right. Yeah. And that is that the model on the right is a 6,000 square foot lot and a building that uses that bonus.
It does. Okay, great. Thank you.
Another change, the proposal is to off street parking. So today, no parking was required in centers that are near frequent transit. You can see those areas in the dark blue on the map. State law also requires that we remove parking requirements within a half mile of light rail and bus rapid transit stops for all middle housing. We're proposing though, that do that for not just middle housing, but all uses, or all housing, I should say. And you can see that as the like purple areas. Outside of those areas, the parking requirements would be reduced from what is generally one space per dwelling unit today to one space per two principal dwelling units. And that would really allow for more flexibility, especially on lots with steep slopes or unusual lot configurations, as well as for stacked flats where providing structured or underground parking is often cost prohibitive. Similar to the, which exists today, accessory dwelling units would continue to be exempt from parking requirements. So that is the proposal for updating neighborhood residential zones. The other major change that we're looking for feedback is on the draft zoning maps. In addition to changing what it means to be neighborhood residential, we're also proposing to change the zoning designation for many areas of the city. Some that are currently neighborhood residential are going to other zones, but also potentially some zones that are already multifamily commercial being changed to higher heights. Next slide. So we have maps online where you can zoom around and get the details of everything. These maps focus on changes in the new neighborhood centers, in existing regional and urban centers where we're proposing expansions. Again, those are places where either there's a new light rail station, the existing center is small compared to other areas or around the Squire Park neighborhood in, you know, First Hill Capitol Hill and the central district. And then lastly, on frequent transit routes. So I will say, when you go online, I encourage people to do that. You can really see a lot of detail. You know, you can see the proposal kind of very easily at a high level from just the colors. You know, areas that are shown as gray are places where there is no zoning change proposed. Places that are shown in blue are areas that no zoning proposal is proposed today, but could be considered as part of phase three. The, you know, the yellow tan areas are areas that would remain in neighborhood residential zoning. And brown areas are places that are, would be rezoned to a new zone, and that zone would be multifamily. And neighborhood commercial, sorry, orange is places that would be rezoned and would be a neighborhood commercial zone. But as you go online, you can obviously see a lot of detail. If you click on individual sites, it'll give you detailed information about what the change is, but also, you know, a description of what that zone means and some images of recent development in that zone.
Brennan, if I could interject here, I just want to clarify a couple, a couple of things. So one thing you can see both on the, on these snapshot images right here in the example, but also in the interactive map online is information about what the current zoning is alongside the proposed zoning. In many, I think perhaps most of the area covered in all three of these place types, the current zoning is neighborhood residential going to a low rise or neighborhood, neighborhood commercial, a higher density zone. There are also examples in here where the zoning was already low rise or neighborhood commercial, and there are some changes to increase the heights that would be allowed within that, those categories of zoning. So there are a number of different changes here. On balance with the changes where neighborhood residential is going to a higher density zoning category like low rise, approximately 10% of our neighborhood residential citywide is, would, would be in this proposal transitioning to a higher density zone.
And so each of the changes that are proposed in all these areas are based on the displaced types descriptions that are in the comprehensive plan and as well as the sizes, you know, the, the size of neighborhood centers are based on, you know, walk shed analysis of about four minute walks from a central intersection where centers are bigger, four or eight minutes walk if there's no light rail and 10 if there is. Frequent transit is really just properties that are directly abutting frequent transit routes are very close to them. And then similarly, the zoning that was proposed in those is based on that. In neighborhood centers, you know, mostly four and five story zoning as well, it's six, up to six stories in the center. Urban centers are much larger, and so you get that kind of a larger transition and a larger range. And so they go from like three stories on the outside all the way up to eight stories in the middle potentially. And then frequent transit routes are mostly at that five story range since it is a small, smaller area. Next slide. Great. So again, you can go to the website zoningonesiatoplan.com to look at it. And as you see, you can click on it, each individual block and get more information on the zoning there. Next slide. So the city is now looking for feedback on the update, proposal update neighborhood residential zones and the zoning maps through December 20th of 2024. Project documents, the commenting tools, the interactive maps are all on our website. We are also going to having a number of public meetings. We have, we're going to have seven in person open house information sessions, one for each council district. We had an online info session yesterday. We'll have another at the end of this process in December. We're also doing online office hours where people can come in with specific questions to talk to staff. And of course, we have an email. And of course, we have an email where people can email questions as well. Next slide. I do want to talk briefly about phase three. So this is a new announcement that the city is, in addition to the neighborhood residential zoning and the draft zoning maps, we are, as part of a later third phase of this work, we're also going to be looking at zoning in existing regional and urban centers. And so you can see those areas, the dark blue represent regional centers, the lighter blue represent urban centers. We are not looking for kind of feedback on, on that yet. Scoping on that process is going to begin in twenty twenty-five. In part, a lot of part, part of that will be pretty significant public engagement. And so this is really kind of a, a later effort, but we are going to be looking at changing zoning in, in these areas, which obviously, you know, today have a lot of our greatest access to shops, services, amenities and transit. And that work will be coordinated with ongoing sub-area planning. So we are required to create sub-area plans for each of the regional centers. That work is ongoing, as well as future station area planning that will happen as part of implementing of the sound transit three link, light rail extension. Next slide, which I think is our last. So, yeah, and so both for, obviously for commission, the public, we have a lot of information on our website. And, you know, additional questions can be mailed to our one seattle plan dot zoning at seattle.gov email.
Great. Thanks Brennan for wrapping us up there. That was a lot of information, council members, we realize, and we went through it fairly quickly. So I don't, I, seems like we still have a lot of time for Q and A. Should I keep the slides up? Is there an interest in referring back to any of the visuals or so should I stop sharing?
I'd keep them up for now. I anticipate there may be some, some questions about the slides, so maybe keep them up and we can refer as necessary. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Michael and Brennan. Commissioners, if you can start adding your names to the chat for questions. We have until about eight fifty-five, so we have about thirty minutes right now for, for Q and A. So if you, I will just say, if you have already been in the chat once, I'm going to prioritize folks who haven't had a chance to ask any questions or make a comment just yet. So if you have like, sign up a second time, like just know that. And, and, but I, but feel free to add yourself multiple times if you have multiple questions. But if you can try to keep it to one question per, per, per round, that would be helpful just to make sure we have a chance to get to everybody. So I see Dylan G, then Andy, then Matt, and then Michaela. So I'll start with Dylan G.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
So appreciate the presentation, excited to engage this, this process and have a question regarding neighborhood centers. And its considerations that you guys are taking as you determine the extents of the neighborhood center and also as you determine which parcels to, to upzone. And I, I asked this question in the context of understanding that these are existing areas where we, where the city has a third place, multiple third places, you know, a coffee shop, a cafe, whether a barber shop, there are existing businesses here. And how is the city, how is OBCD considering these existing businesses? And doing their best to ensure to mitigate displacement of existing businesses in the upzone considerations? And again, I ask, is some of these that I'm looking at, some of these neighborhood centers, I'm seeing parcels that are upzoned, like specifically saying, in the line of West Seattle are areas that have existing businesses currently. And I'm not seeing a lot of upzoned and adjacent residential lots that could provide places for displaced businesses to move during construction. And I just want to make sure that as we're looking at these, we're not just upzoning, the city is not just upzoning only existing commercial lots that are going to displace existing businesses, but they're also looking to provide spaces for these businesses to hopefully be able to move as, as changes occur. It's a bit of a long-winded question, but just wanted to understand kind of your initial thoughts on commercial business displacement in these neighborhood centers and how you might mitigate that and encourage more in additions rather than just replacement.
Yeah. So, so first, the first question about the size, the neighborhood centers were based on the, what is the COMPLAN language of, of four-minute walk sheds. We did a kind of a GS analysis that, you know, looked at walking along the street grid and, you know, did account for topography. We then took that basic one and staff went out and did fieldwork and, you know, looked at a lot of wide variety of different things such as ECAs, et cetera, and that changed those boundaries. And so basically, everything within that neighborhood center is considered for rezones. There's no, anything that's neighborhood residential today is rezoned to something else. I think if you look at the kind of capacity we're creating across neighborhood centers, it's primarily outside of the, where the existing neighborhood business districts are. You know, the, yeah, the, probably the biggest changes are the areas kind of just adjacent to the business districts, going from neighborhood residential to especially low-rise three where there is, you know, a five-story apartment zone. In terms of the neighborhood business districts themselves, you know, if there were places, especially where it was, you know, lower, we did consider upzones. We did prioritize upzones though in areas in which there weren't kind of intact business districts with like lots of smaller spaces. So it's primarily those upzones are on, you know, sites that are either larger and so have their capacity or, yeah, or have, you know, kind of fewer number of businesses, businesses located in them. I think end the line is kind of a very strange one because it has, you know, creek going right through the middle of it. So it's, it's a modest business district and a lot of the, the potential places for expansion of that business district are within ECAs. And so that, that's why I think it has a pretty limited commercial district in that particular place.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for that question. Next, we have Andy.
Yeah, hi. The public comment related to how well water and sewer are keeping up with the upzone and can you comment on what coordination goes on there?
Yeah. So we have been meeting regularly with all the infrastructure departments kind of through the process of the, actually developing the COMPLAN and the zoning. Obviously, as part of the COMPLAN, we started with the kind of high level, like do we have enough capacity for basic kind of water, electrical? That was kind of went through the environmental, sorry, the environmental impact statement. That did find that on that high level, we are kind of sufficient for those things. When it obviously gets down to kind of a site-by-site process that is much more complicated, but working with those departments, we, you know, there, there was a, a feeling that we have in place a process that is sufficient to over time, you know, addressed to growth either through public investments or investments by developers on a site by basis. We also worked with them closely in the development of the zoning as well. You know, a core part of this is that we're putting more capacity near transit stops, which is obviously a key goal of SDOT's work. SDOT also has been adjusting their planning to account for these new areas. They are, you know, using, planning to use location and neighborhood center and the expansions as kind of part of their criteria about both where they, you know, kind of lobby for transit improvements with metro, but also they make their own improvements in, you know, bike, walking infrastructure. We also worked with SBU to identify if there were areas of the city where, you know, infrastructure, where we shouldn't be doing zoning in term, or we should have less zoning because of, of issues. And, you know, generally, they thought the, the system, again, with localized improvements is, is, is sufficient. But there were areas, for example, where we've had to experience a lot high degree of flooding or likely degree flooding where we did change the proposal. Yeah. So I think maybe that's the, I mean, in terms of the specific comments, the, you know, the, the Growth Management Act does require you to look at where expansions are needing. That's in the context of like where are entirely new pipes needed to get to greenfields. It does not require you to, on a kind of a parcel-by-parcel basis, identify where may, you know, extensions are needed. So that is not something that's required or that we're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I, if I, I, just to put a fine point on this, I would add to that is planning for, and I think this is implied by part of Brennan's response, is planning for system planning, which is carried out by our, you know, different capital departments, SBU, others, is an iterative process. So we've been working closely with all of those other departments in developing the plan. They have their own system plans that are on their own update cycles and they all differ a little bit. But the key thing is going forward, and as we have finalized this growth strategy, this, the new land use map then becomes a resource and a foundation for the next iteration of system planning that then those departments need to be consistent with the COMPLAN as they continue their further rounds of any system planning that they need to, to do. So there's this iterative aspect here looking forward.
All right. I'm going to keep us moving. We have Matt H. next.
Hey, everyone. Let's see, in reading the, the NR zoning legislation, there's only a few references to accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units used to be in, in twenty-three forty-four, that chapter, and now it, it isn't. Or it's not, it's none of the changes. And so I'm wondering, it's hard to determine what's going on, whether they're included as units, whether they're included as part of FAR, which they're currently excluded. I'm just looking for clarity, like, and also, so where is the ADU, rules for ADUs? And how does this interface with the mayor's proposed new code that, that relaxes that that was released in September?
Great. Yeah. So on a high level, we are proposing to treat accessory dwelling units very similar to principal dwelling units. And so that means accessory dwellings are included with that density. So if you have a five thousand square foot lot and you're allowed to have four units, you can choose to do that as four principal units, two principal units and two accessory units. But the key is you can't build the four units and then put accessory dwelling units on all of them. Even if you subdivide that, those individ, you know, in it, in the four units for lots, each of those lots can only have one unit. They can't have additional accessory dwelling units. So when you look at how many units you want to do, that includes both principal and accessory dwelling units. Otherwise, accessory dwelling units also, we're removing all the very complicated relations that have a different height limit, different setbacks. And so you kind of have a similar amount of flexibility for the accessory dwelling units as you do for the principal units. The couple of limitations are and benefits are, you know, you can't have more than two accessory dwelling units on a lot. And you, accessory dwelling units can't be larger than a thousand square feet. And then, of course, accessory dwellings have to remain on the same unit as the principal lot. So you can't subdivide them separately, you know, through full subdivision or through unit lot subdivision. There are also some benefits. Obviously, the, you know, there's a reduced debris or setback for accessory dwelling units consistent with what exists today. They also are not, they don't have to meet the same parking requirements or some of the string, they don't trigger street improvements in the same way that principal units do. But yeah, but fundamentally, you don't see a lot of regulations in the legislation itself because predominantly they're, they're subject to the same standards as principal units.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Michaela, sorry, I was a mute.
Hi, Michaela Daphern. I'm so happy to be back in dialogue with OBCD. It's, it's very exciting to see the work of the comprehensive plan moving forward and seeing some iteration and reaction to public feedback and the planning commission's feedback. So really appreciate you guys taking the time to be here today. And it's a real unique opportunity that we have to be able to get some clarity on what you're proposing. My question, I know, I know we're not, I know I just used my question time to make a statement, but sorry about that. I, when we were looking at the last plan, I was a little perturbed by the strategy that we were going to add all of our lower income, eighty percent and below capacity primarily along arterials and that we weren't extending that out into the neighborhood residential zones a little bit deeper so that we could create a variety of housing choices for low-income folks in terms of, you know, if you wanted larger family-sized housing that wasn't along the arterial, that that was an option for you if you were a lower-income renter. And I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to whether or not you guys, and also I was concerned about the, the air pollution and noise pollution. It's just generally unpleasant to live along arterials. Can you speak a little bit to how you have evolved your zoning concepts to address that feedback in particular?
Well, I, I, and Brennan, let's tag team a little bit on this. I, 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 I want to say upfront though, and I think this map illustrates this is, and, and point well taken, we'll respond to the substance of it for sure. But I think it's a little bit of a mischaracterization to say we are predominantly providing new opportunities for more affordable housing types, especially apartments along, directly along arterials. If you look at the balance of between neighborhood centers, the center expansions, and you can see on these maps that there's a lot of new apartment rezoning to apartment densities, not directly on arterials, but in a more of a, of a, of a district basis, extending one or several blocks from the transit arterial. If you look on balance, most of the new apartment capacity is not directly on the arterials. So, you know, it's the neighborhood centers and the center expansions are, are, are really focused on broadening the area for new housing types out into more of the residential areas surrounding, but within an easy walk of transit. So I just wanted to make, make that point. I do fully recognize, especially on, right, you see the frequent transit routes and the rezone, you know, the, the arterials that connect these centers that have frequent transit. The proposal is to retain a fairly tight area for rezoning with the lots fronting the transit routes themselves, in some cases extending a couple of lots deep, mostly to maintain an equivalent distance and developments, developable sites along that corridor. It really is a balance that we sought to, to strike. And I'd say the mayor's approach, recommended approach to this is a balanced approach wherein we're providing that doubling of capacity citywide. That's a lot of new potential for housing. There's a variety of housing types and that wanting to retain those across different areas of the city and that there are different things we're doing. We're not just doing the frequent transit routes, but also the different types of centers where we're adding new housing capacity. So it really is more of a balanced approach here reflected in what the mayor is proposing. But Brennan, you may have some, something you want to add to that.
No, I thought that was great.
All right.
Or actually, maybe I would just say, I guess, yeah, so maybe you're asked, well, how does it change, reflect that? And I think you're, you know, the frequent transit route proposal hasn't really changed. Maybe that's where the major criticism is. But obviously, we, the thing that has changed is we've created more neighborhood centers, which, you know, which actually do create primarily developed capacity off of those streets around the business districts, as well as in that, you know, the, the, some expand, additional expansions as well, which again, tend to create that off of those areas.
And I'll maybe, but I don't want to pile on too much here, but I think it is also, we, I mean, in terms of our approach and perspective here is the areas along the transit routes themselves, be it within centers or outside of centers along the frequent transit arterials, we still have a lot of development opportunity that, you know, can be and in this proposal is, is, is created for housing that is, provides access to our, our transit. That's an important value and important objective that something really weren't going to leave on the table here. It really, it is important to the growth of the city, to our climate goals, to our housing goals, to take advantage of the transit routes we have and the ability to create new housing opportunities along those routes. And so you, you see that reflected here. That is certainly something that is weighed on that balance.
Okay, we have seven minutes left and five more people to go. So I'm going to keep us moving. And commissioners, if you can keep your questions as tight as possible, that'd be greatly appreciated to make sure we have. that'd be greatly appreciated to make sure we have space for everyone. So Matt M.
Yeah, I was debating whether or not I should change my one question to two questions to three questions because I thought we only have seven minutes, so.
We can also pass along any extra questions to folks afterwards and have Michael and Brennan respond via email too, so.
Right. Could you go to the frequent or the parking requirements for frequent transit map? And then this, this one is.
There, there we go, yeah.
This one is a quick question. I will ask one more substantive question after this. Is the parking minimums waived in industrial areas? I see it's not along like the soda light rail station or any of the rapid transit in that area? Or is that just outside of the scope of the comp plan?
It is, well, yes, we're not waving it for industrial uses at all. And so those, obviously residential is not involved, allowed in those areas, so would not change parking there.
Okay, and then I saw that you gave an estimate for the zone capacity for housing increasing double. Is there any analysis in the comp plan about additional retail capacity? Because I know we're adding new neighborhood centers, is that something that you've done analysis on? Or is that something that could be announced, could have analysis done on?
Well, there is a baseline analysis and again, that, you know, that existing capacity comes from our existing capacity model, which we ran to inform the comprehensive plan, that's based on our buildable lands report, which is a state requirement that does estimate capacity for both housing and for jobs, different non-residential capacity. I would say there have been some very minor changes to the amount of commercial square footage under this zoning proposal, but it's very small in comparison to our capacity overall. Most of the changes in existing commercial areas add height and not additional, which would add housing capacity and not additional commercial capacity. We will eventually run a new capacity analysis, both for housing and jobs on the proposals that moves through council. We haven't run new numbers now, but you shouldn't expect that to change very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. All right, Deanna.
Thank you. Hi Brennan and Michael, thank you so much. My question was around the methodology for estimating the walkshits. I, you know, Brennan shared, you know, general approach around GIS calculations, taking into consideration slope. But I was more wondering if, and this could be more of a follow up response, if if it's better suited that way to describe whether there were exclusions with regards to overlays of known geographies or locations where, you know, certain type of development was not going to be possible, even if you expand that. So it's not kind of like, you know, shown as areas of opportunity for development where there's kind of something that obviously precludes it, whether it's risk, whether it's, you know, any kind of series, series of considerations that could be taken into account into those walksheds. And so I was just curious if if that was accounted for in the methodology as well as whether lack of existing pedestrian facilities were accounted for as a consideration. Probably not, you know, it would have not make sense, but just curious what the methodology accounted for, for the creation of those walksheds and kind of some of the basic assumptions that were used, you know, what speed was it used, you know, to assume for like, you know, the, 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 the walking for an average pedestrian and those kinds of things? Because I think it actually shapes very interestingly how we might see what we're seeing here and how to interpret it. And similar to, this could be also follow up question via a response via email, which has to do with the parking requirements that are shown in neighborhood residential to one. It would appear that that doesn't actually change necessarily, you know, given the increase, right, in in units that would be allowed per per lot. Would that change significantly the amount of, you know, vehicles that would actually be expected in a particular neighborhood in the future compared to existing conditions or current current zoning? So I was just curious if that was looked at and if you could share some what what the change in parking capacity offsite, right, sorry, onsite would be.
I, I'm going to jump in on this one, think that you, you, you did a good job of packing a lot into that question. There are really two questions there. I'm going to propose that the parking question is a little bit more complicated. If you want to submit that one in writing, we'd be happy to get back to you. I'm not sure we could do that one justice in a couple of minutes. The walk shed analysis, the walk sheds themselves were just one piece of information and especially with, well, the walk sheds. So the walk sheds are used for two, for in several different ways. And in one, in what you're seeing the parking map right here, here, right now. There, the walk shed is, has a clear foundation in statute is that we can or cannot do something. In this case, we cannot require off street onsite parking. And then we just apply the walk shed, that's what the statute says. And that that's what you see here. With regard to your question seemed to be about how we use the walk shed to delineate the expansion areas and our new neighborhood centers. And there, the walk shed was just one piece of information we used as a starting point. We started with the circles, which were roughly 800 feet radius from a center. We converted that to a walk shed, a walk distance along streets. We then, and that suggested a boundary for each of the neighborhood centers that differed based on their geography. We then did field work, we looked at the existing uses, we considered all of the factors you just nicely listed out. Those were all factors we looked at in defining the ultimately what the boundaries that are recommended for the neighborhood centers would be. And in balance, the area you see that is within the neighborhood centers is very similar to the amount of area in that 800 foot circle, but it really looked at a number of different factors.
Okay, keeping us moving. Nick.
Thank you, and my camera is not working, so apologies. But Brennan, Michael and the team really want to just commend the the team for really great work on the zoning updates webpage. It's clear that you all put a lot of thought and effort into presenting it in a very user friendly manner. So really complex subject, made it accessible, really appreciate that. I have kind of a, maybe a question on the dimensional standards that you all are proposing in the neighborhood residential zones, particularly around the 20% set aside for open space. And that's outside of building footprints, driveways and parking stalls. And the materials, you all note that the 20% requirement is achievable under all the scenarios, but requires careful design in many situations. So I'm curious whether these restrictions, based on kind of how you're hedging there, are unduly, potentially unduly limiting housing supply and feasibility on some of the Seattle lots that are are smaller? And what thought went into providing perhaps more flexible standards? Maybe reductions based on proximity to city parks or other open spaces or other ways that you could maybe improve frontage improvements? Larger sidewalks or landscape strips or more soil volumes that you can have larger trees in the right of way, kind of getting at some of the same objectives that open space is providing, but not in such a prescriptive, narrow way?
Yeah, so first I'll say that the updating Seattle's neighborhood residential zones report has all these visualizations for each of those. It shows how the open space standard would be met on that site. And so again, across those models, you know, our, our takeaway was that it would not unduly, you know, limit housing supply. Obviously, we have this available for public comments, so we're looking at people's feedback about whether that is accurate. I think, well, I'll say one thing we did change, we did make to make it more flexible is we did say that, you know, previously it had to be at ground level. Now it can also be in kind of on roof decks, although the area of the roof deck only counts, counts half as much as area at the ground floor. So we really do want to encourage that ground level open space. So that's one way that we're making more flexibility. Obviously, you know, everybody, people can always put roof decks on tops of buildings. And so there, that's maybe another out to make sure it doesn't prevent it. Obviously, roof desks are expensive though, too. So, you know, obviously looking for people's feedback on whether we got that balance right.
Great. Okay, um, next up is me. So I had a quick question about your, I was really glad to hear kind of considerations around urban flooding and you, you were talking about accommodating for creeks going through places in terms of the zoning maps. I'm wondering if you could speak to specifically considerations around sea level rise and particularly in the South Park neighborhood? Because I noticed that that area is being upzoned, so I'm just curious about what considerations you had there.
Yeah, if so, in general, our proposal across the city doesn't have significant rezones across most of the areas that are prone to sea level rise. For example, we basically, you know, we're excluding our shoreline areas predominantly. So at a high level, obviously, the two areas where that is more complicated are South Park and Georgetown. The proposal for South Park is actually to change it from a urban center, which would suggest a much higher degree of of change in those areas down to a neighborhood center. We are, however, proposing some kind of minor changes there to make it somewhat more consistent with a neighborhood center. I think even if you look at, you know, that we, we certainly did consider, you know, the local circumstances there. And I think that change actually is lower than you might have in other neighborhood centers because of that circumstance. So, so overall, the proposal is to, you know, reduce the the capacity for what that's envisioned for South Park as part of the growth strategy because of the sea level rise, the drainage issues, also the, you know, the conflicts with industrial areas, lack of transit in that area. You know, the other area where it is also his issue is Georgetown. However, that was an area in which the neighborhood specifically asked pretty strongly for to be an actually urban center, we're making a neighborhood center, everything that's more consistent with was on the on the ground there. But also, you know, in that area, it's it's a pretty confined zoning change and, you know, not, not as broad as as you might have otherwise done if it was a place with better access to transit and less concerned about flooding and sea level rise.
Great, thank you. All right, Dylan G., can you keep your your comment in within a 60 seconds? Is that possible?
Yeah, I think it's a quick, hopefully a quick yes, no, and if not, I can just take the answer via email. So it's two quick ones. The first one is frequent transit map. Is that what is going to be utilized by the city when the term, you know, access to transit is used? Is the city's frequent transit map that will determine whether an area has access to transit?
Yeah, that's right. When we use the term frequent transit or areas within a quarter mile of frequent transit, that is the same frequent transit that we currently have a map of within the city. Then there's also major transit stops, which is new, and those obviously are light rail and bus rapid transit stops.
Yeah, and the second one is MHA, does that apply to in our zones?
It does not.
Okay.
But it would obviously be applied to those areas that are rezoned to other zones.
Great, excellent job, Dylan. Okay. All right, we are on to public comment. We have two public comments we need to make space for. So I just, we're going to utilize every minute, you might have to stay one minute over apologies. So just a reminder, the commission provides time for public comment at all meetings and a reminder that we do not hold public hearings and we are an advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders who intend, make the actual recommendations. Individuals who make comments, the commission should remember that the mayor and the city council make the decisions. And we encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. We will now pass to John or Olivia to facilitate the public comment.
So we do have one that was submitted in writing, just a reminder that we only take public comment in person in the board and commission's room or that are written in advance and sent to us. So I'm going to read one and then as time allows, we'll allow Donna to go for the second round. So I'm going to read this now and it's from the person's perspective, so keep that in mind. My name is Robin Bruce. I am a resident on Capitol Hill. I am very concerned about the climate and I believe that getting more housing in the urban areas around Seattle is the number one best thing we can do to reduce emissions and improve justice in our community. The new zoning maps are an improvement over the previous plan but fall short of what the vast majority of residents have asked for in the engagement process. I believe we should have density on non-arterial streets near transit so that more people who rent have the opportunity to live on quieter streets. I like the new neighborhood centers and I think that they should be larger and we should have more of them. I believe we should have 20 or 30 story buildings near link stations with density gradually going down as it fans out. I believe the city should preserve trees and the space trees as it builds out. And most of all, I believe that people who work in a neighborhood should have the ability to live in that neighborhood if they choose. We do not have enough money to subsidize all this housing, so building good quality, desirable workforce housing must be a profitable business. The zoning maps and the rules around building are the key pieces that determine if this is possible. As an ordinary citizen, I have no idea if the draft plan enables that. As far as I can tell, no one knows because no one has done an analysis. We just come up with new rules, try the mountain in 10 years, we have the opportunity to try again. We don't do this with anything else. If we raise a new tax, we do an analysis to see how it will affect the community. How come we aren't doing this with a comprehensive plan? I would like our leadership to be in a position to make informed choices and as a citizen, I want the information so I can evaluate the quality of their choices. The people who work in my neighborhood should be able to live there, show us how this new plan does that. Thank you. concludes that comment. And now I will turn it back to Donna. Go ahead, I'll start the timer.
All right, thank you. Again, my name is Donna Breskam, a civil engineer. I did mention there is a lawsuit, Oom Living is suing the city of Seattle. I am the engineer of record on that. I was deposed by city attorney Andrew Eberly in the last month. And I will be the expert witness in front of King County Superior Court on December 9th on this lawsuit requiring an individual developer to do a capital improvement water main extension. There was discussion that work has been done with city staff, with Seattle Public Utilities, and that they have capacity at the high level. That's not the issue, they do have the capacity. It's the infrastructure. They don't have the updated infrastructure and they're putting those infrastructure requirements on private developers. And the method in which SPU does that is issuing a water availability certificate with an infrastructure requirement. 1,600 properties since 2017 have received permit applications, have received infrastructure requirements. 200,000, 500,000 has resulted in 5,000 dwelling units that has but not not been built. I'd like you to read my article in The Urbanist. I published it on October 14th, 2024. I worked hand in hand with master builders, with the permit, the government affairs coordinator Parker Dawson and with the legal counsel Brian Holdclaw. And it's got hyperlinks in there, it will educate you incredibly on how Seattle Public Utilities is not providing information consistent with the Growth Management Act requirements. In the Capital Improvement Plan, there simply is not enough money in the Seattle Utilities Public Budget Capital Improvement Plan to do all these upgrades. Effectively, the list of upgrades needed are those 1,600 properties, those developers that were told to put in water mains, valves, fire hydrants that didn't get done because the projects crashed and burned, there's a backlog of upgrades. It's not being identified in Seattle's Public Utilities Business Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All comments that we've received are forwarded on to commissioners.
All right, and I know that we had several folks who were online who looked like didn't understand the public comment, how our public comment works. And so apologies that we aren't able to take live online comment at this moment, and we are at our time. But we totally welcome you to send in your public comment to Olivia or John, and they will pass it along to us to make sure that we get it. So please encourage and thank you so much for taking the time to join us. We really appreciate it when we get to hear from folks, so thank you. All right, thank you all so much for staying just a couple minutes over, really appreciate it. Check your emails, see the one from Vanessa about our schedule for the next couple months. I know it's the holidays are coming up, but it's super critical if we want to be able to comment on these zoning maps. So, so please, please confirm that you are able to make as many of those meetings as possible. Sign up for your open house ones, that you can attend one of those open houses and appreciate you all for your service and your volunteer service on to on this commission. Super important work. Right, and that, we're adjourned.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.